Hey there.
Hi.
We call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, October 3rd, 2016.
Here we go.
6:30 PM, City Council Room. Mr. Robares is absent this evening. Other than that, Mr. Wilson's present, Mr. Morissette, Mr. Vincent, others include Mr. Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Ms. Hogan, our city manager. The next item is the approval of the minutes of September 26th, 2016. Now with entertaining motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Morissette. Seconded by Mr. Vincent. Seconded by Mr. Vincent. Any discussion on the minutes? Then, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. This is an opportunity for members to make any comments to the city council for items not on our agenda. Then, I don't see any hands of anyone, then we'll move on. The next item is Kingdom Games Halloween Hustle event request for White. Mr. White, welcome.
Thank you.
Your chair, Phil.
Yeah. So, so this Halloween, we're doing a Halloween Hustle in conjunction and partnership with the Recs Department, trying to get kids out there, and then they participate in the parade and do the Monster Bash. That's all on state property. But having that collaboration with Parks and Rec, I think, is, makes the event just that much better, I hope, for everybody. But the other thing we're doing as part of Halloween is, we started a blood drive through a pool water swim called Vampire Swim. It's 25 meters or 100 meters. Last year, we did it at City Dock. It was very successful. We had six people come down from Quebec City, and we had four or five Vermonters. But it was, we started, initially, I was trying to get people to come here to do that, but then I realized that for the short distance, why not have it in any venue you wanted to have it? So I spread the word, there were two other people working with me on it, spread the word that why don't you organize your own venue in Boston, or in New York, in Brighton Beach, or... And we ended up with 15 venues. Two in Ireland, one in Cork County, and one in Dublin. One in Loch Ness, and one in Loch Lomond. And about 10 other venues around the country, all as part of an international blood drive. So, my request to the city council, because there's normally no swimming on the City Dock. So, in talking to Laura and Andy, it seemed to make sense to actually formally request permission to use the dock, which we did last year. And the council approved it then. And it's a, it's a better place to do it than Proudy Beach, because it's close in with the other Halloween activities. So, that's kind of why it fits in, people can come watch this craziness. And, and, and the crazies can, some of them participate in the run, and they have lunch at one of the restaurants in town, and then they go do the swim. So, it's been very successful so far.
So, you're swimming off the boat ramp, that's the...
Right.
And by the end of the month, it's usually no traffic.
Well, I'm sure.
Gets a little chilly.
Yeah.
The water's warm usually, but the air's cold.
We had a few people swim to the vault head and back, which was pretty impressive, without wetsuits.
Without wetsuits, that was, that's a cooler swat.
I see no problem with this.
Oh, no.
Not at all. It's great. Tie everything in, and...
There's no insurance, is that from under our...
We had...
We have insurance.
We had a share also.
On your cover.
So, I... I think someone should ought to make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Morissette, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on this, from anyone? Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
That led to a second, thank you. And that led to a second request, that, like Memphry Magog, and really, a lot of the other lakes in the Northeast Kingdom are now emerging as world-class venues for open water swimming. And like Memphry Magog in particular, we have our kingdom swim that draws people from 35 different states, and a bunch of countries like Ireland, and Scotland, and even Saudi Arabia. But that's a big swim, we do it out of Proudy Beach. We also do, in, as part of Swim Week, we have eight lakes in the course of nine days, and we do a swim off of my place, goes around the islands and comes back, and it's, it's part of a bigger week of swimming. But what has really begun to blossom is swimming from Newport, the length of the lake, to either Magog, or up to Skinner Island, or El Grande, or Georgeville. And next year, for example, we have seven swimmers who are already signed up for next September to swim the length of the lake. We have swimmers signing up to swim, we've now created these routes to El Grande, which is 16 miles, and to Smuggler's Cave, which is 18 miles. And the historic place to start these kind of ultramarathon swims has been City Dock, and that started with...
Until the recent years, then they started at Proudy Beach. Yes, in the later years, it was always from Proudy Beach.
Oh, the La Traversa was?
Yeah. They, that's what I was about to correct on that, yeah.
Okay.
They used to always start from Proudy Beach. Maybe in the beginning, the first year, they hadn't invited me to the dock, but all the later years, they started from Proudy Beach, and they went around and went up, and launched them until... Yeah.
So, since we started Memphry, we've been working out of City Dock, and have gotten permission each time to, to use the City Dock. And the advantage is, is that there are facilities there that are, we can have access to, the Marina facility, whatever. And I thought that it would be a good time to start a discussion of that, so that if you, if it met with your approval, then we could work with Parks and Recreation directly without coming before the city council for any of those swims. It's, it's a great place to start and end. These are small groups of swimmers, as opposed to the La Traversa or the Tax 20, although the La Traversa is, didn't happen this year, even though it stopped crossing the border in 2002 or '03, I think. They're now, not, they didn't run it this year, and they may not run it next year. So, we've become the place to do these swims. It would be great to be able to use the City Dock, if that's agreeable.
I have an issue with that, because of the time of year. Vampire, the boats are pretty much gone, but that facility, with the boat traffic, people launching their boats, and the amount of boat traffic, you'd have to have it really well-coordinated, because there's been times at the dock where they get backed up going in and out of the dock, and that's the only concern that I have is for that, because you do have, because you would have to block off quite a section for the swim. Because I know what you did at Proudy Beach, when you go up around the corner and then come back. So, you would talk about leaving from the dock, and then coming back to the dock.
For Memphry, we leave at midnight. So, we've never had...
Memphry's okay.
We've never had a problem with boat traffic there, and in fact, it would be a problem to leave from Proudy, because half the time, they end up in the weeds off the bluff anyway.
No, Memphry, I didn't have, that one I don't, but it's the other ones, where you wanted to have, like, the ones like during the daytime. The big one that you have, that left Proudy Beach this year.
The day swims all leave early in the morning, like at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning, because they're long swims. And if there's, if there's ever a boat coming in, or, you know, coming in or going out, we wouldn't, we'd wait for the boat, because...
But if the swimmer's already in the water, that's the thing. You see what I'm getting at? Because you don't want to block that facility, because a lot of fishermen launch very early to go out fishing early.
Yeah.
I mean, they get up at the crack of dawn, the fishermen. That's the only concern I had, and take, I think it would take a lot, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just worried about coordination, and I wouldn't want to have the boat launch. I mean, that is the city boat launch, not the state boat launch. Because if it was state, you wouldn't be able to do it. But since it's under the city, you can. I mean, you know, with permission. But that's the only concern that I thought of when I was reading all your material, is a coordination with all the potential boaters and boats, you know?
One of the blessings and problems with this side of the lake is that there's not a lot of boat traffic. There is some boat traffic, but there's, over the course of the day, it's small compared to what you see on Magog. And I can just say, from my experience, there's only been one time when we've had a swimmer departing, when somebody was dropping a boat in, and so we waited, until they were in and they were gone. And it's not like a mass start of 150 swimmers, where you have to start on time. So, they, we waited, and then they cleared, and it's also been helpful, because we're dropping boats in to accompany the swimmers, too. So, it's nice to have the boat ramp to be able to accommodate that. My, my thought is that we would work with Parks and Recreation, maybe try it on a year, a trial basis for a year, have them report as to any problems that might come up, and I'd be happy to work with Andy and others there, but it seemed like that would be a more logical place to go, as a general basis, rather than coming to the city council with individual requests for, oh, I've got a swimmer who wants to go to Skinner Island at a particular time, and then trouble you with, with that.
So, these swimmers are accompanied by people in kayaks?
Each swimmer has a kayaker, and we have a motorboat support for, you know, if it's one to five swimmers, we'd have one boat available to provide support and get them out of the water if they ran into trouble.
So, if we had swimmers in the water, and there was a boat coming into the dock, they would know that there's activity there? I mean, it's not like, not like this.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Till you guys come back, though, you'll be coming back into the dock, right?
That's correct.
So, the only other concern I would have is during, if it's during the afternoon I'm taking it, what are the hours of the gateway? Wouldn't be...
The gateway...
Which is different than it had been, because now we have a restaurant there that I'm kind of...
In the busy season, I think it's, I want to say eight during the busy season, then it closed down as the evenings got longer. I think he brought it down to about six, and then, as the weather turned, I don't even, I'm sorry, I don't even think it's open right now.
I mean, how about the snack?
I don't know about the snack.
Yeah, no, that closes down.
So, we're talking about the gateway?
Talking about the gateway, the boat traffic.
Well, the gateway.
The gateway.
We also have, as I said, boats come with the swimmers. So, my boat is in and out, so I launch it and I retrieve it out of the boat dock. So, I have to come into the boat dock, or the boat ramp, anyway. So, the, I have to coordinate that with the swimmer and the kayaker, and if they're, if they're boats, which we really have not experienced, boats coming in and out of the access, whether we're coming in in the evening, or leaving in the morning. But there is a place where I, you know, I can bring my boat in on that, that side dock there, which is what I do. And the boat ramp is awfully wide. So, the, the only time, actually, last year, that we had any problems, was some person brought a very large old Chris Craft onto the boat ramp and parked it there while he was cleaning it out. And that blocked half the boat ramp. The boat ramp itself is wide enough, so you could actually do two boats in and out at any given time. So, that's, that was the only time when I encountered a difficulty, and I, I thought that was an odd place to park a boat to clean it.
I mean, they...
It was actually parked right on the ramp, you know, blocked half the ramp for probably two hours.
Oh, no, that's not supposed to happen. That's not supposed to happen.
I won't name any names.
There's a wood, probably one, make sure I didn't sink, because it would, it's gonna suck up.
I won't, I won't name any names.
Well, that was the only concerns I had, was with the boat traffic, and I know how times it can be, it's like, in and out, in and out, real busy. So, I think it would take a lot of coordination, if, you know, for, maybe we could do an experiment for one year, just to see, I don't know, just a thought. That's the only concerns I have, because I know it can be really busy down there.
I don't have any hour burn at all with it, and even with you coordinating with Parks and Rec. But the first time, there's any problem, Parks and Rec drops out of it, and you'll have to come back in here for each single event. I don't mind the extra stress. But I don't have any problem with Parks and Rec, but if something goes wrong, you're gonna lose that privilege, and you'll be back talking to us. That's, that's my opinion.
I think it's worth the trial, yeah.
It's worth a try.
I think it's worth a shot. I mean, my concern is safety of the swimmers, of course.
Right.
I'm sure that's your concern already, anyway, so...
That should be out.
That's right.
So, let's have a motion.
At least keep us informed, please.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, have updates after each event to see how it went. So, let's make a motion out of that, and do our motion, and approve it, by way of trial.
Yeah, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve this request for the one year, and stipulation that if there are problems, and we, you won't be coordinating with Parks and Recs, you'll have to come back here for each one.
So, a motion made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Morissette. Any discussion on that motion? Then, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go.
The board?
Next.
Next item is proclamation for November... Did I miss something? Oh, okay. I like this one. Okay, the next regul, next item is proclamation for November 1st, Extra Mile Day. And this is something that we've been doing every year, it just recognizes all the folks who go in Extra Mile in the community, and it's part of a national event that day, and we just have a proclamation system.
Great idea. We have examples, examples in the audience that always go to Extra Mile, right? That's a great idea.
And so, we need a motion to approve...
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Then, Mr. Vincent, seconded by Mr. Morissette. Any, any discussion on it? And, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Today is the third.
You want?
The next item is the proposed monument, monument installation at Carmelot Park. We will see a letter and a picture, and then basically...
Press want one, or the audience want?
You can have this, but I have the actual... The black and white doesn't do justice, and the color, it looks a much better.
She's got a color on her, she could pass around.
Yeah.
There's two pictures.
There's one that the scan looked good, yeah.
And then there is a lock that would look like a place behind them.
Right, which is really nice.
If they can see it, or wants to pass through.
This is something that...
Happy to do that.
This is something that Mr. Carmelot had, had, he had mentioned it to me one time, and then he called Laura on it to put in, to have a granite monument put in Carmelot Park, which I thought was very nice, pushing the lady of the lake at the City Dock there.
What I'd like to do is, if the council approves the installation, it might be fitting to have a nice little installation ceremony, because it's up to have a dedication ceremony.
Yes, Tony Upfield would be wonderful, and his son may be young, that'd be great.
We're gonna get it up in February, or?
I actually don't have the timeline for you. I think, I think the company was waiting to hear whether or not they could obtain permission from the council, and then bring it in.
No. This is...
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request for the granite monument at Carmelot Park.
Motion made by Mr. Vincent, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on it? Then, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, proposed South Bay access area wetland permit application from the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. Laura, do you have?
Yep, this is more of an FYI. I got an email from our contact at, who's the Land and Facilities Administrator, I believe, for the Agency of Environmental Conservation. And you might recall that we just updated the lease, the 20-year lease sufficient game for the South Bay access. And they are going to be doing some improvements to that access. And I'll read, the short version is, there are two boat ramps, a northern lane and a southerly one. They have one dock currently on the northerly ramp. That northerly ramp is in dire need of repair, and they started to repair it, but it's, it needs to be replaced, that's what they discovered. The southern ramp is made of a large concrete slab with greater water depth, and is in excellent shape. So, they're proposing to purchase a new dock and install a concrete anchor all at the southern ramp. They're gonna eliminate the northern ramp completely once they have the new dock in place. So, the only boater, then only boater use will determine whether or not this northern ramp area reverts to a more natural shoreline, or continues in its current state. The new dock on the southern ramp will be 100% ADA compliant, including an ADA parking space right near the information cams. We've got some maps of people that are interested in it. And I thought it would be worthy to bring that before the council, not that there's anything for us to do, other than simply be aware, because we did do the lease, we went to town meeting, and it was like, it's like another chapter.
Right, super, great. Thank you for bringing in, thank you for bringing in. Anybody have any questions on it? The next item, A&E contract for engineering for proposed Lake Mont Association water request. Tom is not here this evening?
No, this is a form. Again, it's sort of standard operating procedure when a large project has been proposed and has received council endorsement. This is the water system at Lake Mont. We have met with the group representing Lake Mont earlier this summer. They are aware that it's gonna be a very large project, and before we can do anything, this is the first step, which is to engage our, our contracts with A&E. A&E is the company that, it's Aldridge &amp; Elliott is what it stands for. They've done all the engineering in the city, including the wastewater treatment facility. So, there are go-to people.
And the amount that they estimate is $5,000 for the project? I mean, for the, not for project, but for the engineering, yeah. If they say if it's $5,000 for the project, we'd be dancing, but no, it's for the engineering, for the design.
This is gonna be, this is gonna be a very large project.
Yes.
And this, this launches it officially, and as I mentioned, we've been in contact with the Lake Mont Association. They're very understanding. We traded copies of materials, so we all had the same documents, and we had to work together on this. But just to get the permits, once we get to the point where we know what the permits are, and we start applying for them, that in and of itself is gonna take months. So, this, this at least gets us going in the right direction.
I thought we were further ahead of this on the project. I thought this was something that was gonna be complete this summer.
I think it was a coordination of the meeting with their, their association folks and the city.
And getting their easements.
Their easements.
The easements was the biggest issue.
Yeah, you had their easements.
And this is gonna help us determine exactly who needs water for instance. So, it's, it's, it's gonna be quite a project once it starts.
Because I know we had to discuss it earlier this spring, about would we do it, would our Public Works Department do it, or would we contract it out?
Right.
We're a long way from that.
Right, right. The preliminary thing was the easement, and that takes time.
Yeah, so, okay. Oh, that's fine, I just, I thought we were further ahead of this on that, right?
So, we would need a motion to enter into a contract with Aldridge &amp; Elliott, not to exceed $5,000 for the preliminary engineering.
Do we budget for us? Is this something that we...
This is gonna come out of Tom's budget.
Out of Tom's budget, okay.
Motion made by Mr. Morissette. Seconded by Mr. Vincent. Any other discussion on this? This is something that we agreed to, we've been in the works for many years, trying to get it, yeah.
I thought we were further ahead.
Then, a motion made, and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. You want to witness, Mr. Johnson? He saw, he saw. I'll give that back there, okay. Okay, the next item, authorization to engage legal counsel for tax collection. City manager, this is something that we have to do now, per state, state law. It's some new law that, we never used to have to do this, but basically, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, this is sort of like full disclosure, when it comes to announcing that we're about to go into the tax sale phase of tax collection. And so, I kind of wanted, I wanted to put this on the agenda, so people would be aware. We've had a very good response at the first round of letters, and now it's time, there's been a sufficient number of people that have not made contact, that we need to go to this phase. What this, this is a resolution that was recommended by our city attorney's office. They have a division that collects taxes, it's the same office of Stitzel, Page &amp; Fletcher. And the resolution allows Stitzel, Page &amp; Fletcher to collect a certain amount of fees associated with the tax sale from the person that they are collecting from. And I understand that there was recent case law that allowed them to do that, and in order for them to do that, we have to have a resolution allowing that to happen. So, they generated this form, and assuming that the council will approve this and sign this, I will submit the list to our, the collection attorney tomorrow.
How many do you anticipate?
I think we're gonna have around 20.
Around 20. Well, not bad, Adam.
Originally, it was like, we had 200, something like that.
Well, we've got both property and water in somewhere, so we may have more than I can follow with the deal, once we have the final. They started doing the inventory this afternoon.
That's the nasty part of this job.
Yeah.
Don't like it at all, but it's necessary. Others pay more if they don't, don't pay the furniture.
So, we would need a...
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve this. Motion made by Mr. Vincent, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion?
Do I have the name of the, of me, again?
I'm sorry?
Your attorney's company?
Stitzel, Page &amp; Fletcher, that's S.T.I.T.E.L. Page, P.A.G.E., and Fletcher, F.L.E.T.C.H.R.
And there is, there is one typo in the name.
Oh, you got the...
Oh, yeah.
Jackson is wrong.
Mr. Robares. I brought that up to the city manager's thing. And the original, we sign once we've approved it.
Has the correct...
Has the correct...
Oh, okay, then. Oh, good.
We rely on you for that, Tom, so...
You have the original, I put it...
You've got it in front of you.
No.
Does it have the E on it? Look underneath your forms.
Yeah, it doesn't have an E.
Keep going, keep digging.
She did send you an original.
Keep digging, keep digging, keep digging.
It's there, we promised.
It is, I was expecting it on the, on the paper, that's why. I was expecting it on the, whatever. All right, then, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Did you have a question? Oh, I say.
Will the law firm be taking a percentage of the tax, or will they be adding a fee on it?
I don't know that. I'm sorry, that's a really good question.
If I remember, Mr. Davies used to add a fee on it.
Yeah, no, we still...
Cause he adds.
He still get her a full time.
He charged you, I think, usually it's the, um, Mr. Davies, yeah, in the past would charge, it would be his cost that he would add it on.
I'll find out.
There's always been attorney fees on tax collections.
Yeah, no, they didn't have.
Right.
Right, I know that, I was wondering, they take it out of the tax or they add the fee on?
That's part of, that's part of the amount they have to pay to get the property back.
I agree.
Yeah, that's what I know.
That's why they do the essential things, so.
Yeah. Okay, the motion's made and seconded. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Motion carries.
So Jack will have to stop him, I guess.
Okay, then we'll move on. Next item, update on eighty-one East Main Street situation, zoning administrator Charlie Elliott. Go ahead and give us an update, please.
Are you sure you got the whole way to me already?
You're ready.
Return.
The situation. Basically, we have people trying to start a business there. They're drawing some criticism for its appearance, probably justifiably so. Uh, we have neighbors that are opposed to it, uh, again, probably justifiably so. And I'm trying to work with the parties involved and the parties are not willing to work for a solution. And basically, I've been trying to get some screening for Mrs. Plouffe's property. And trying to get them to try to keep the place reasonably deep and orderly. And there's a lot of, uh, say scrapping, if you will, going on between parties. And I don't think it's all related to zoning. So I find myself in kind of a difficult position because I'm trying to draw compromises between people that are not willing to compromise. And the zoning bylaw, uh, that is, that type of business is allowed there. Uh, it's in our form-based code zone, uh, which is to promote businesses along East Main Street. And try to help people grow. So it's, you know, the zoning violations come down to pretty much appearance and some buffering between them and the neighbors.
What about junkyard? Because it certainly looks like a junkyard to me at times. It really does, I mean, and I know that falls under the state per view.
The, I issued a citation on that basis. There is a definitional issue that creates problems. Certainly, uh, I think it's a addressable issue as to as far as appearance, if they're gonna run that kind of business, some buffering.
But, but for the junkyard, is he, is he repairing cars or is he stripping cars for the metal? That's the concern that, you know, I have when I drive by and I see it.
Okay, whether he's doing, he uses cars as parts to repair other vehicles that he owns and then sells the vehicles.
He isn't doing that. Let me finish, please.
He's not selling parts. As a part.
So, I don't know, I think it's, to me, it's a gray area. I mean, the state defines junkyard. And those times when I look at some of the cars there and I consider it junk versus, you know, a, um, a repair shop or a, um, a repair shop or even if you're taking parts out of one car and putting them in another. Cause, I mean, there's some days it looks like he's cleaning it up, but then it gets worse again. So that's where I thought it looked like a junkyard to me, you know, and I know the state controls junkyards.
Good question, do you know how long it takes him once he does take the parts to get rid of the car that's, you know, is he getting rid of it or is he holding on to it?
Uh, as far as, wait, what I'm saying to him, once he has a car ready for sale, he puts them out and he is selling cars.
What about the ones he's tearing apart, what is he doing with those?
Uh, once he has taken the parts he needs, they go up to rights.
But that's not what he's doing, they're left there. I even got pictures of them where their cars are still there. And some have been there six months. And he can only sell twelve cars a year, so he's got thirty-five cars, so what's the rest of him gonna do? You don't have a license.
The other thing, if they're junk cars, what's the hazmat up there? I mean, oil and freeze running all over the place or in the ground.
And he does have that.
Well, so it's one person at a time, please, okay?
Yeah, when I drove up there today into your driveway so I could see what was really down in the back. And it looks like you have a garden out there. And there was a little sign, but I didn't get out of my truck to read what the sign says.
It says, he told, he's got a sign saying keep out his property. No trespassing is what it says.
Okay, because, and that's probably right on the borderline.
Right.
And the car that was beside it, maybe two feet from the damn sign. I know this is frustrating and maybe we need to re-look all our damn zoning stuff because we have other areas that as we drive by look like junk holes. But defining junk is, is not an easy thing to do. But the dumpsters just floating out there on the side of the bank and somewhere, if he's violating the screen portion, which you, you say yes.
He is violating that.
Then, then we, somehow, they need to put a damn barrier fence and a nice one on some junk old dumpster. So that, if, cause if I lived there, the last thing I'd wanna be doing is looking out at junk every stinking day cause they pay taxes for the city and, and I'm not picking on you.
No, no.
We need to tighten it up because there's some up on Scottsdale, there's one right down at the foot of the hill over here.
I think what's happened here is, this is something that form-based code needs to address. We made it too easy on certain areas. There needs to be something in there that requires fencing. Because any other person to get a permit outside the form, as you saw, form-based code, nine times out of ten, they make them put up trees, they make them put up. Excuse me, I'm coming, I gotta. But, but I'm just trying, with the form-based code, it was meant to promote business, yes. But I think we need to tighten it up there and then, um, some other areas we need to look at. Uh, as far as that, maybe add that back into the form for that section because any, anybody who would have to get a permit, say, I'll just use Scottsdale, you know, that's, that's not a, uh, that's not form-based, but anybody who wants to do anything up there would have to put up a buffer. And that's what I think, we need to somehow get into, we look at that, we look at that bylaw about buffers.
It does say, I got the, I got the thing here, it says they post require for the fence.
But where I get confused, Mr. Mayor, is if, even if we ran form-based code for new businesses, but that, that property's grandfathered in anyway.
Says they're here.
So he doesn't have to follow the form-based code. He's been grandfathered in because it's been that for fifteen years I've been in the city. Cause I've been such a business in there.
And also, there's a thing, you know, says they're supposed to be twenty-five feet away from my border.
That's, I was just gonna bring.
Yeah.
Well, not, not in a form-based zone.
Well, not, not in, not usually in business districts either.
Well, it says residential, commercial, so it's, so it relates to me.
What happens to the thing if he's supposed to be repairing cars there, the cars are supposed to be registered and inspected?
Another, I'm.
This particular section of the code, screen service area requirements. And that refers to people who have, like, businesses that have dumpsters in other sections in the back corner of a parking lot and so they have to screen them.
So what's different about this property that they don't have to screen the dumpster?
They, uh.
That's just a curiosity.
Yeah. Uh, they could screen the dumpster, but I just think if, on this situation, that wouldn't do a lot of good.
Is there any way we can enforce? I'm trying to figure out my mind.
The twenty-five feet.
The twenty-five feet. Try to enforce the twenty.
Five feet from the lawn.
Right, right, if we can enforce that twenty-five feet, can we somehow require, I know this is the, if this went to Act two fifty, they'd make them put up trees and screen. You know, that seems like that's one way of, is there a way that we can do that? I mean, this didn't even have to come from a permit, correct?
That's right, is it been other uses there, wasn't a change of use?
It wasn't a change of use, it's been an auto, but it was auto body repair.
But the guy that worked there, like Perry, he would bring cars in service and they go. This guy isn't doing that.
Right, right, no, I understand, I understand that, I understand that. I'm just trying to, trying to figure out in my mind how we can try to.
And then another thing with this, he owns all those cars, so they're not getting serviced from other people. They're all his own cars.
But is there a way?
I think, I've been trying to, I've been trying to see if I can gain a compromise. I think the, this, it's gray here with the form-based code.
That's where I think that needs to be revisited.
The one thing I see possible is to force the issue before the DRB. And one of the DRBs has the ability to impose conditions.
Yes.
Okay? And that may be it, but.
Have you had anyone from the state, I'm sorry?
Can they do that on a piece of property that's been grandfathered in now? I think that's grandfathered in, uh, it's not like it's a new business.
Yeah, I think here, uh, the fact that there's conflict between business and a neighbor, there needs to be a resolution.
Have you had anyone from the state come up? I mean, they were quick to call me personally, cause I signed the document way back for the rights thing. And they called me and questioned me, all this stuff, I couldn't remember, it was years ago. And then they called me out of the blue for that. And is there any way you get somebody from the state to come up and look at it and make a determination? Because to me, it looks like a junkyard half the time.
The state has, I talked to them, but I don't remember all of their criteria that have happened before it becomes a junkyard. And I could check into them again. But one of the, one of the things is, is he must be selling parts, okay?
Be a junkyard.
Right.
And he is.
He's not selling parts, he's.
I've seen people come up there and take car, parts for off the cars themselves. So you can't tell me he's not doing that.
Well, he's taking parts out, but he's supposedly putting them in other cars, he's not selling them. I don't know, I haven't seen it.
But you see somebody drive up with their own car and go in there with a tool and take cars out and go to their car like he's selling them.
Okay, no, I, I know, I just haven't seen it, I'm just trying to, I haven't seen that aspect. I mean, I, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to, somehow trying to figure out how we're gonna solve this in a nice amicable way and try to figure out, that's why my mind is working in the background here, trying to think on the fly and just trying to think of possible solutions and things because.
Charlie, can you get hold of the state and let us know what next we mean, what you're saying?
Yeah.
You know, that might be, that might be the one avenue that we have that hasn't been looked at yet.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if we get from the state, cause maybe my, my definition of a junkyard isn't there. So, boy, those times it, it looks awful in my opinion.
I think what John said may be true, I think the grandfather clause could, could really move things.
But state controls all junkyards.
I think we would be willing as a council to pay for somebody from the state to come up and take a look at it. You'd determine it real fast.
Yeah.
And I know your frustration. And we're frustrated too because we can't, we have to follow all these little rules before you start threatening to take people to court.
Yeah.
Or we're gonna end up in court. So bear with us, we are.
And I think what's happening too is this day he should go by and it seems like he's cleaned it up.
Well, what he does is.
And then, and right, and he cleans it up or he probably moves them so we don't see it.
Yeah, he moves them over right behind the building, so he keeps, he tries to keep the front line looking good so people from the main road don't see it, but it's all over right here.
Yeah.
What I, what I see and believe is happening is he brings some in, he sells them out, and then he brings more in.
Yeah.
But he doesn't remove the other ones quick enough.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I got pictures here, this one has been here since, look at this. No motors in them. And he's been here since March. And they're still up there.
What about the bylaw that says if you have, if you're working on vehicles, you have to have them registered? That don't apply to individuals?
In residential zone.
In residential zone, okay.
How come he don't put a sign up saying what he's doing?
He's not putting up a sign, the, the individual that's trying to start a business there is trapped in between his landlord, yourself and others. And he's made it clear to me, he's not investing any money till he's confident he's gonna be able to stay there. If he's not gonna be able to stay there, he's not gonna put any more money into signs or anything else.
So then he must realize it.
And I think that's probably a wise decision on his end.
Yeah. And there's stuff dealing with the owner that doesn't wanna do business with anybody.
Right, so he, he, he got caught in the middle of it and he's trying to do the best he can with it, but.
Mr. Mayor, Jack asked me if I would read a comment that he had in his absence tonight about this topic. He felt pretty strongly about it, just, it's, it really summarizes what we've already talked about. Basically, it says that, um, I've gone over tonight's agenda and the only comment I have is, uh, on the comments that Charlie's response on the situation on East Main Street. I think that the council was duped by Paul and Trish when they passed form-based zoning on that street. What it did was take away a setback protection that the general residential zone, um, had that abutted a commercial zone. I personally saw it behind my own house when a resident on East Main Street converted, um, to an office and they were allowed to put a parking lot behind the building. It could go all the way up to the property line. With the old zoning bylaws, that would've had to been twenty-five feet away, so I understand Mrs. Plouffe's problem. Form-based works on Main Street. Uh, it does, it does not abut general residential, it abuts urban residential, which allows for some commercial. East Main Street on the other hand is different and should not be included. It is lowering the value of property, uh, behind the commercial properties. If possible, we should schedule a meeting, um, and a report from Charlie as to how we can change East Main Street zoning back to the way it was and protect our residential neighborhoods.
And what is that, is that urban residential or general, where she is?
She's actually in the form zone.
No, no, but was it urban or was it general before?
Before, it was commercial.
No, no, her house.
Her house.
Her house. It's always been commercial. She's not in a residential zone.
It's all commercial.
Which complicates it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, it does.
Well, when, uh, before, uh, um, Hamlet turned over, it was residential.
I think that whole street up through there is considered.
Yeah, but Doug just took it over here about ten years ago, but before that it was residential cause, uh, my neighbor, it was just a regular family house.
But it might've been a residential home in a commercial district, cause we still have some of that left. And as a little disclaimer, when he said Paul, that wasn't me.
No, 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 no.
I wanna make that known that, and, and personally, I don't think anyone was duped. I think that what they were trying to do was to improve something and this is what happened.
Well, nothing's perfect, so.
Right, nothing's perfect, so I don't think anyone was duped. I think it's just that at the time when form-based code came in, we're trying to improve the city and make it more open for business and to do things. And now we're finally realizing some of the effects that have a possible negative effect that can be worked on. So that can be changed. Form-based code's not etched in stone forever. Your zoning always evolves. And this might be a case where, um, we've gotta go back and revisit that, but, you know. That's what I'm, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
How do we do that?
Uh, zoning, um, that has to go through the planning commission, right? But the council can, well, we can request it through you.
Yeah.
Uh, but to have them go back and revisit that. And I think it's something that has to be done, that's what I.
Well, we, we have a lot of used car sales lots in our city, none of them look like that.
No.
Right, that's what, that's, that's another reason.
That's, that's absurd, yeah.
You got one right across the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, well, exactly, nice and neat, I would be happy to, we'll put that as a neighbor, yeah.
Right, right, no, no, that's my big thing, why I think it looks like a junkyard.
Yeah, they're all old cars, they're no more inspected.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
I also live in that neighborhood and I agree that it's, it's an eyesore. And I feel very sorry for you that you actually have to live within, on the other side of the property. As we're talking about borders or fences, I would just like to caution all of us not to rush into, um, allowing some kind of fence that could end up looking like a junkyard fence. I, I feel like that would be worse than, than looking at it the way it is now.
Yeah, I think zoning could be written in such a way that maybe, and maybe the border or fence could be very.
Little people.
Kinda like what Act two fifteen requires, this is what shrubs and trees, something more natural than an ugly, ugly fences. That's what I was thinking, if we could somehow maybe incorporate that in.
Some kind of barrier.
Some kind of barrier that's more natural than just a, a fence of-
Yeah. I know a lot of people around, on our side off over there, like on Union Street, the moment place, they just put fences there as a nice vinyl fence they put up between that,
Right.
that junk, uh, junk place and everything between there.
Right, right.
I thought Form-based code only applied to the downtown area and that East Main wasn't all included.
It would not belong to East Main Street. And that included East Main, um, I forget all the Form, all the zones, but included East Main, because that was considered commercial for years. That whole area was considered commercial.
Right. Yeah, and the map says it's commercial too.
Right. Mr. Bayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Finished, uh, zoning board way back in nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight. That was a commercial zone, even then.
Mm-hmm.
How far back that goes, I do not know. Oh, but Form-based code wasn't in existence back then.
Right.
And that is exactly what screwed this thing up, because many of your applications up against the residential zone were, what do you call those, Dennis? Permit applications.
Conditional use.
Conditional use. And when you had a conditional use permit then, you had all kinds of criteria in the law, in section forty-four, whatever it was, in the state law. Whereby you could require all kinds of conditions. Otherwise, if they didn't meet that, the permit was no good.
Right, right, right. So I think we just need to revisit that zoning for that area. I mean, there's different forms, we have Form-based, Form one, Form whatever, right, remember?
Form three.
Form three? The three, this, that's Form three, where you could change, you could change the form in that area.
The, let me just explain the form, just a little bit. Form one is for downtown, and that's pretty rigid. The Form three is designed to be a multi-use zone, which would allow residential housing as well as other uses. However, it, uh, the issue of no buffer got carried through to all of them. So I would think that what we might wanna do, looking like a Form three, uh, which is, East Main Street would be where most of it is, where the back does border residential properties. That we might look at having a setback, maybe not twenty-five feet, but maybe a setback buffer zone involving something like trees or shrubs or hedges uh, as opposed to people putting up fences.
Right, right. That's something I think we really truly need to-
Something like that. The actual zoning up the street where it exists is the Form-based code goes back in most cases, uh, like one lot, two lots in some places. Then we left the commercial zone, as it was, for about another one or two lots, and then it goes residential. So we left it that way, so each, you know, you got the residential, you got the old commercial in the middle, and then you got the Form base. The, what we have, Mrs. Plou's property, is an abnormal situation. In that her property had been in the commercial zone, and it got just into the section, went to Form base. So what I've been trying to do, was hoping to do, was to come up with an agreement between parties on some trees, shrub, screening, and then I don't know if that's gonna work out.
The trouble with that, I see Charlie's, it could take years before you-
That's what I mean.
That it's substantial enough to, and in the fall, if they lose their foliage, you're looking at junk all of a sudden.
Are they gonna plant saplings there, you know, that'll take it ten years to grow up?
I mean, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but-
Let's just let one talk, once you know. You can, you can actually, you can, I mean, that you can require a certain type of like, I'm thinking cedar hedge.
Cedar hedge.
Oh, it takes, takes a while.
No, but you can get, you can get multi-chroned cedar hedges. You can get, you know, it doesn't have to be-
Something like five.
No, I know, but that's up to the person, the business and the person.
Yeah.
But that's what that is. I think, I think-
Those vinyl fences, I'm like, pretty good looking.
Yeah, they are.
Hard to obtain link bed.
Well, it, and, and it's instant, it's fully sure.
Right. Right, and vinyl fence, but I think it's something that we just gotta look at. Um, that's what I wanna find a solution to look at.
I think he just needs to relocate, if you want my opinion, but it's just not, you said he can sell twelve cars a year.
Yeah, that's what it says. I talked to you. You don't have a license to sell, so I can sell twelve, twelve cars a year.
Just twelve, that's what, yes, no.
So, so the rest of them gonna sit there, 'cause he can't sell.
Nope.
He can sell twelve cars without a license?
Yeah.
What, may I, may I finish, please?
Please, please, please.
After that, he can sell all the cars he wants, as long as he pays sales tax on the way he buys them.
That ain't what the duty man told us. They said you gotta have a license after you sell twelve.
He can sell all the cars he wants, as long as he registers them and pays sales tax on them.
Prior to selling.
Prior to, when he takes ownership. They then get taxed again when he sells them.
State's got their hand out, they're happy, you know, once we get paid.
So if you sell very many cars, it becomes more profitable to pay the fee and become a licensed dealer.
Right, right.
So right now, we want Charlie to go back and see what the state, get someone from the state to look at it, to determine, because my own, I know it's just my opinion, but I think it's a junkyard in my opinion. Um, but the state's the experts on all that, unfortunately. Um, and then I think we really need to start looking at redoing the Form three zone. 'Cause that's the biggest area we have, is that zone.
Well, it's fine, but like John said, they're grandfathering so far. Right, but it's not gonna solve our problem.
It's not gonna solve.
No, that would solve it, because if it's in the Form, Form only allowed Charlie to issue a permit. If you change it where it's in a residential, you can still require it to go to the DRB, correct?
Did the initial permit?
No. No, no, what I'm saying is you change the zoning by law. I know, but he's already issued the permit, which is true. But, and a way to solve it is you gotta redo the current, you gotta redo it anyway. You know, you, you know, it may take years, it may not help in this situation, but it's gotta be redone. And I don't agree with, you know, and the, um, I think we just gotta look at that zone, Form, Form zone, any Form-based zone, which really is Form three, that's near residential. But that's true, it's been commercial for however long I can remember. It was commercial back in the, I hate to say it, eighteen hundreds. There was always stores, but people lived above this store back then. That's always been commercial through there, you look at the history.
But the owners respected their neighbors, they didn't-
No, I know, I know.
They wanted to mess up sites.
But there's only so much we can do too.
That day's gone.
Yeah.
That day's gone.
I think, I think they, I think we probably do. The only thing we really issue there is the Form-based code would be to try to define the buffer between the commercial and residential properties. I don't think you need to rewrite the whole code.
Exactly, right. And I don't want anyone to get the impression Form-based code is evil and bad, because we have Maplefield, which is a massive improvement. We've got Rural Edge over here. You know, and we've got other properties that could never be redeveloped. Unfortunately, right across the street over here, that could never have been torn down and redeveloped technically, and, I mean, you know, without the new code.
Like on East Main Street, East Main Auto is an example of what Form-based code does. It put the building up to the street, all the parking and the other stuff at that facility's behind it.
Right, and that's what, and that made it look better, that, so he did it correctly.
Right. Right.
Um-
And so, I did, the Form-based code itself isn't wrong, but I, I think we should
Tighten it up.
Especially in the Form three. Uh, the possibility of requiring, you know, some buffer hedging of some kind.
Just tighten it up somehow, that's what I think.
What's the turnaround time for that?
Buying properties.
What would be the turnaround time for that? How long would that take to get there?
Once the planning commission come up with a proposal, and then we first, we have to warn it, hold hearing on it. After we approve it, it comes to you people, you have to warn it, hold hearing on it. About the shortest timeframe you can put a change through is about three months.
Then what happens if the owner don't want to do it?
Well, then he's fined.
If, if the owner doesn't wanna do it, then he's faced with violations and fines.
Okay.
Just, just a thought, are we missing something? Should we have an attorney look at, look at this whole picture for us? I'm, I'm certainly not versed in, in our zone.
Well, the, as far as the zoning, it was all reviewed thoroughly by an attorney before it even came to-
I'm talking about this, this one situation.
Oh, the exact situation now.
Should we have one just look at it and say, this applies and this doesn't apply, or? I just hope we're not missing something that we don't get.
Maybe talk with the state and stuff.
I think let Charlie to go through the state, get them to come up and see about the junkyard.
True, but with Charlie talking and changing stuff. So we go ahead and change stuff.
It doesn't-
But this has been like this for fifty years, a hundred years. So I don't even think if we change something, now, well, I'm sorry, you've been here a hundred years, now we're gonna start fining you, because
Retro, retroactive, it'd be a problem. You change the zone, you can't apply retroactive.
Right, you can't.
Yeah, it won't solve the-
It's not gonna solve this, but it'll solve future.
Yeah.
Which I'm glad to look to the future, but this issue-
On this particular one, we need the state to come up and take a look at it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
And then they can say, no, this is what we gotta do to help clean this up, or, sorry, people.
So I think look at some other parts of them, but it's-
Please do.
Yeah. Also, like, down this too, on gas stations, where it says parts that are taken out, they're supposed to be, you know, cars supposed to be stored in the building. So see, so if you can't get the state to do it, you can bring charges against for that. That's, that's underneath the
It's not a gas station.
Gas station, service station.
But that is not a gas station.
No, but it's a service station where you service cars. It's underneath that title.
Never seen it before.
For those cars, the state-
I think the bottom line is we gotta have the state look at it.
Okay.
We do have to have the state look at it, because
They're referring.
Um, but I can tell you, uh, it's always been, it's never been that bad, Mr. Mason. Before Mr. Mason would roll over if he saw what it looked like now.
I guess he would.
You know, knowing what he used to run there, I mean.
Yes, he would.
Yeah, no, I lived outside Mason's for a while.
Mr. Mason, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think getting the state in here to try to see what, 'cause I really think the only way we could do anything right now is junkyard. I truly do.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what it does.
Because, because
Looks like a junkyard.
Not really in there.
Either, either that, or-
What if they say, no, we don't, we're not interested in that? Is it, can we first, might be, probably not.
No, I think when I talk to him, we can figure out if there's any possibility, there's something there.
I think they ought to come up and actually look at it, not just talk on the phone. Well, they may already have, well, we need to find that out, because I look at, oh, this person's running this operation, and you have a legit operation, and they gave them, they gave them the third degree of how about the recycling, you know, metal up there.
Yeah.
And so I think, um-
I talked with them this week, and they're waiting here for Charlie.
The state?
Yeah. All the, the people that take care of junkyards. And they, they haven't done anything, 'cause they've been waiting for Charlie.
Okay. Okay, well, let's have Charlie call the state and then-
Hey, Charlie, I feel bad that you're in the middle of this too. I mean, I know you're not, you're not a runner.
Yeah, I feel bad for the city, I feel bad for the city, it's like-
Yeah, no.
It's just a bad situation.
Yeah.
No, I, I realize that, and I, like I said, I-
Know that you're doing what you- What you can do, Charlie, I-
And to be perfectly honest, uh, in the two years I've been involved in zoning, we've had quite a few situations come up. And I can honestly say that most people that, as I did instead, worked with me.
Worked, yeah.
I gave them time, and resolved a lot of issues.
Oh, yeah.
And I still try to do it that way. Uh, this is one of
What's the top one?
Two. At the moment, I will bring up the other one tonight. That I think is gonna require further action.
Yeah.
Okay.
But in most cases, working with people, I resolve a lot of issues.
And you, I know we know me for two weeks, but could you at least write something up? Laura usually sends it to us, so that we have an update, maybe even before the next meeting, and maybe you could find something out, and
Yeah, oh.
If we have to, maybe we could have to have a special meeting just to try to work on this issue.
I would be happy to.
What's he classified his business as? What's he classified the business as?
The one that's there?
Yeah, he just sent him an ask, yeah.
It's a, it's a combination repair and sales.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I know, I know. So, okay, we'll leave it at that. You can send us an update through the city manager and feel we need to have a special meeting to, to, um, deal with what the state responds. I think we will.
Uh, no, I agree with her, I can-
No, they probably won't respond with a week, but-
They might have no problem with selling cars, they have no problem with repairing cars.
It's just the way it looks, it's the way it looks.
Keep me in the eye, keep your eye on that.
Right.
I may, I think that one issue, I may be able to zero in on
Yeah.
somehow, some way, that, uh-
Well, do what you can, Charlie.
Yeah, do what you can and all for it.
Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you, Charlie, for coming in.
Oh, well, quickly, well, I think-
Hang in there. Okay, hang in too.
Yeah, I will.
It's frustrating for us, it really is.
I know.
'Cause here I thought we were making progress. Back to what I said before, he cleaned up some, and then it went-
Well, like I said, he moved it all over, over where I am, more on my side, that made it look good from the street and, which is it doing?
Yeah, I know. So, okay.
Just one other, quick note, another project of West Main Street, uh, Kincaid.
Oh, the one that's-
Yeah, what's going on with that?
I talked to him today, and he thinks that it may be sold. The people he's been working with had to sell another property first.
Really?
So he's got his-
Probably for the land.
He's got his fingers crossed. He said if it falls apart, he will go ahead and get the building secured at least. So I hope.
I don't know how you, how do you secure a building when the windows are all gone? It looks like it's about to fall down.
You're worried about-
Boy, I'm not.
Avoid it up, but, shoot.
I worry about fire there.
That's what I worry about, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, I wait for someone to torch it.
No? Some idiot that will light it.
Who bought the paper? No, seriously, you know, you go by that and you look at it.
The house off the coast of it.
You know, you think that we are. That was the same building kinda like down by Cody's, the carpet place. That took forever to come down. I was always afraid that that would have been torn down.
It took five years.
Five years it took to get that one down.
I called with this, somewhere like that.
Well, that old building, that house.
Yeah, the hollow by Cody's carpet.
The Carter's building? There's something man broke into it.
Right. Okay, good. Thank you, Charlie, thank you, thank you. They have to get permission from the state, and they don't issue my, so.
Good luck, Charlie.
Okay, moving on. New business, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Wilson. Any new business? New business, Mr. Vincent, city manager, Laura?
We just got notice today from the Vermont Transportation Board that they're gonna host a meeting at six P M. October twentieth uh, to discuss their transportation policy associated with trains, both passenger and prey. And this is one of seven meetings they're having around the state, and, um, uh, I was asked to circulate the information, so I told them I'd announce it at tonight's meeting. They've distributed it, I don't know if you got it, thank you. And Cynthia's already distributed it, so I was putting it out to all the, um, uh, outfits that I was wearing, I had Facebook pages and that sort of thing. And they're going to put ads in the three local papers to warn us. They're hoping for a good turnout.
Good.
Again, it's October twentieth at six P M. Down at the Gateway Center. Thank you.
Anything else?
Not for new business.
Old business, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Wilson? Charlie answered my old business question, the house up there. Um, any old business?
Laura, any update for Hill Street yet, or anything for that yet?
Uh, Tom went there on Friday, and I don't have an update from, since then.
If I can get one by next week, I'm great, thank you.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Any old business, Laura?
Um, just to announce that we now are up to eighty-eight water meters that have been requested. And Public Works has already started installing them. So people will hear from, from Public Works, um, you know, sooner than we thought. I, I did wanna make sure people understood there would be a delay, they would be disappointed. They'd be hard to start.
Wow.
Good hope about that.
Yeah, and that's all they have.
That you have?
What was your, what was your update on, Neil?
Hill Street, you're on your water issue? Drainage, flush water, flush-
Our city has a new business. We have a pass at car station on Saturday from ten to two.
On Saturday?
Yeah. And we have the state fire extinguisher trainer at the station, so if anyone's still in there, the used fire extinguishers just stopped that station.
Ooh, that'd be, he's gonna be there during that whole time period, or just?
I have it, yes. We get it every year, so.
No, but he's gonna be there to train, oh, you're doing, oh, you're doing it?
You aren't-
Oh, yeah, yes.
Oh, okay. That'd be kinda, that'd be good to know, because-
Hopefully you have, you have a child.
Yeah, we'll hear from that.
Yeah, okay.
All right, hot down.
Any, um, anything else, then? The next meeting date's going to be
So-
Monday, uh, Monday, the seventh, October seventeenth, six thirty P M. Here. We need a motion to adjourn at nineteen thirty-five.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all of us in favor, so we adjourn.